Yeah, the agenda, additions, deletions. Yes, sir. Anybody else have anything to add?
I think there's no.
Motion to approve it. As I go. Did I go backwards?
That's all right.
I got that some more. All in favor? Public forum, anybody who wants to address the board on a matter not already slated to be discussed by virtue of being on the agenda, and may do so now, make to be recognized by the chair, make sure you identify yourself on the record.
That would be me.
Chair, please.
No.
I'm sorry. Oh wait. No, I didn't turn the minutes yet. Go ahead, Jack, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. I would like to take two moments to talk about the flyer that the town sent out the last few days here. I have some real concerns about that I would like to address to you tonight. As you know, I've been working on school budgets for, I don't know how long, six years, and I think I have a pretty good handle on them. And in reading this newsletter, I tried to read it, of course, unbiased and coming from an advocacy position, but in looking at it from the perspective of somebody who knows little or nothing about the economics of this proposed transaction, I find it confusing, misleading, and unintentionally, I really think it sends a seriously incorrect financial message. Let me use analogy. Let's say that I am going to build you a house, and the cost of evaluation of the one is down to $320,000. And I tell you that it's going to cost you $316,000. Is that a good deal? Or not? What do you think? Is it really a good deal? You got sure? Confused about it? Or did you then learn that I had been elected to tell you that, in fact, it was only going to cost 200, it'll cost you $200,000 as a capital cost, but over 25 years, you'd be paying that $316,000. And in fact, I'd forgotten to tell you about a 37 percent discount. That's unfortunately what I believe this document does. And I wouldn't think you'd think it was particularly a good deal if you hadn't learned about that. So that's effectively what this flyer says, or rather, it doesn't say. It's, it doesn't come across clear. Now, by the same token, the economics of all of this are not all that straightforward. And I spent a lot of time in the last five years, I think I understand these school budgets pretty darn well. I've been advocating to get the cost sharing through, and we've somehow managed to do that, and that saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. I worked very hard at that. I've been working on this budget for several years, and on the renovation budget, and I have a good handle on it, and I think it's, it's a good solution, and I think that is the right solution. A second, a second thing. You talk about a peak year in this document. What does a peak year mean? When is it? What's it mean about the other years? There are no cost implications or no, no facts to support that. Is it the first year of the 25 years? Is it the last year? You have no way of knowing, other than to go to the RSU 21 website. So this kind of assumes that it leaves it up to the individual voter to take the initiative to go to the website and dig it out for themselves. And I would argue that, that, ah, that really isn't our audience, and that this document could have and should have, really, provided the necessary information in a straightforward manner to all the people in the town, in a fashion that they can really understand. It's done, and it's, flyer's out, for better or for worse. What can we possibly do about it? Before I go into the, what can we do about it, let me offer you a flyer that we've been handing out after a good old dump on a rainy day on Saturday. Got good of all of 100 of them Saturday. And I think this will explain to you in a very clear fashion what this is really all about. What I assumed in this flyer was a $200,000 home, which is the average value interval, that the half the homes in this town are 200 or below. If you go down to the table, you'll see that on a monthly basis, you're talking about $2.51 per 100,000. Five bucks a month in the first year, and it isn't until out in 2017 that you hit a peak year, that's 23 bucks a month. And then declines every year after that, the next 22 years. That didn't come across, okay, in the flyer. Finally, if you look at the bottom, is it a good deal for our town? I think that those two sentences accurately state what this is all about in terms that most everybody can understand, and are, you know, neutral, but factually accurate. Let me read it. Well, everybody's got it.
She's difficult.
Yeah. We're getting an 11.3 million dollar building, if it's approved, and we're paying 7.1 million for it. That's the analogy I was talking about earlier. Yes, it will cost 11 point, 11 million, or 10, I'm sorry, 10.8 million with interest over 25 years, but that isn't relevant. You, you don't buy a home based on the 25 or 30 year cost, you buy it on the initial capital cost, and more importantly, on what you can afford on a monthly basis. That's the kind of information that I think we should be giving to our taxpayers. So what I would like to ask of you folks is that, if you agree with me, that you put out not a retraction, but certainly a correction, a clarification of the facts here, in a fashion that everybody can make a good, valid decision based on an understanding of the big picture, as well as what it's going to cost everybody on a monthly basis. Thank you. I would add one final comment. I would hope that you could make that decision tonight, so that if you decide to go ahead with it, that it can be implemented this week. And our second flyer, we stand on post haste.
Okay, I'm not sure I agree with your analogy completely. Interest is reeled out, those are costs, and you can't discount those. I don't think, buying a house, and what you think its value is, or maybe in the future, is the same analysis as here.
I use the same relative numbers as, as to this scenario.
But I'm saying, I don't discount the interest. I mean, I think that's a factor for anybody deciding whether they can afford to pay the house, and the interest component is usually a large portion of what you're paying.
Yes, yes, absolutely it is. What we're voting on, however, is the capital cost, 75 million.
We're voting on committing ourselves to repay 113 million.
Well, approximately.
Well, I think that's the number I've heard at most meetings.
No, when you're, no, no, you're, from a contractual standpoint, you're voting on the capital cost, the, if it's approved, then the district goes out and gets the best available rate in the timeframe that's appropriate.
Right, because the number I've heard in all the hearings I went to was this 113.6.
It's in the right ballpark.
Sam, do you want to identify yourself?
Yes, Sam Holt from Arundel. Having spent 20 years in the, in the investment world, perhaps I could sum things to this. Jack is right, what we're voting on is the capital cost, that's the only number that's on the ballot on the board, I believe. The interest rate that we apply to the bond will be determined when the RSU goes to the main bond group, and they negotiate the rate at that time. The rate currently as of last week was, was 4.68. A year ago, it was 3.6. I don't know what it'll be when they go, but whatever it will be, for every quarter of a percentage, 25 basis points, it increases or decreases the total bonded cost by 3.3 million. So what they go to, what they agree upon at the final signing, is not that number that you take here, 113, it's whatever it was going to be.
I understand, I'm just saying, the interest component is, I think, an important component to people analyze whether I want to commit myself to pay the 74, 75 million plus interest. There's going to be interest.
I couldn't agree more, because that's always the way people do it. I was just pointing out that this is not an absolute number, and won't be known until the actual time they sign the bond.
That's why it says approximately.
I'm sorry?
That's why it says approximately.
I understand that, but it's a 3.5 million dollar swing, 25 basis points.
I know, but you gotta, you gotta throw a number somewhere, right? I mean, you just can't leave it and let people guess, right?
I understand.
So, I mean, that's what the RSU has been using to say, hey, this is kind of, this is what we think, based on today's numbers, so I mean, you gotta get that out to people somehow.
Fair enough, all I'm saying is, I, I showed this flyer to five folks, five neighbors who aren't as involved as I am, and four of them said, what's this, I don't understand this, you're talking different numbers here, I mean, is it only going to be half a million more to stay in the, to drop out of the RSU? I mean, all kinds of stuff. People get confused, you're talking about capital cost on one hand, and bonded cost on the other hand, and people don't understand it, they look at the numbers, and they don't understand where they are. I think it's confusing, unnecessarily confusing.
But the question on the ballot also authorizes the bonding, so I think it's important for realize, for people to realize what the estimated bonding is going to be, because I believe there's two questions on the ballot.
Yes, there are.
You know, so one of them includes the authority to go out for bonding.
Agreed on.
So it's you're, you're authorizing somebody on your behalf to, you know, and again, the same thing when we bought a house, you have to include that interest payment, you have to look at the overall payment when you're buying a house, you can't just say, oh, I can afford a 20, you know, if I just go there and say, you know, a $200,000 home, but I don't figure on the interest, I'm going to get a payment that I can't afford if I don't figure it in with that. And I, I do have an issue with this pamphlet as far as Maine has a new circuit breaker law. The circuit breaker program was eliminated, and they've put it into the income tax, and from my understanding, I mean, Wendy, it says to call a town hall, Wendy has had people and said, you know, you basically have to file your main income tax form to get a rebate back. We have no idea, last I heard, it was down to $400 max or something, it's really been quite.
It's true.
It's been quite drastically, and, you know, I, I think saying that this circuit breaker law is going to help, I think people who have been depending on the circuit breaker law are going to get hit, are getting, are going to get hit this year when they realize they're not going to get the rebate that they were used to getting.
Would you suggest that I change the wording to, because I can do that, trivial. A little ago, after the dump, it's Saturday, and have more listeners.
I mean, can I get help if I can't afford it?
Getting back to the, the key point, there are two 11 million dollar numbers quoted here. One is an initial capital cost without interest, and the other is expenditure over 25 years, principal and interest. The implication is that somehow those two compare to each other. Well, if you take that 11.3 million dollars and add difference in interest, never mind changing interest rates, now, now you're up to 18 million dollars. So this, the seven, paying 7.1 instead of 11.3 is a darn good deal for Arundel, I believe. Is it free? Is there free lunch? Of course not.
Again, that's your opinion, okay? And that, this reflects that, hey, this is a good deal. The town's position is, we want to put the facts out and let the voters decide, and that's kind of where I look at this. And, and does this have facts in here that are not factual?
I believe so, I, I believe by implication, absolutely, yes.
Doc, did you want to say? Identify yourself.
Dorothy Redwater. I don't have a problem with showing the interest, I just think it's very important to have the capital cost in there. And Todd, do I think for half a minute that you want this to imply, the way, the way I feel is being perceived, we all know there's people out there that still are not happy in this district. They are going to look at this and think, we're really not getting much of a deal, and sure, we can swing along, because that's what we're paying anyways. And it's going to just, in my opinion, the possibility of people thinking that a 10.79 is our cost versus what it really would be, would be 18, is going to get them commensurate again, and getting people running around. And that's, if we could have had the project, the 7.1 in comparison, would have helped. I also, on the first paragraph, it says, um, this amount represents the increase to your tax bill for only the financing portion of the project. It does not represent any additional maintenance and operational expenses necessitated by the project. Do we know that there is going to be additional maintenance and operational costs? Because what I've been hearing from my studies is, you know, we're bringing the heating system back up, and so the making, are we assuming that there is? I just don't even know why that's in there.
Can I make a, because I specifically asked that question.
Yeah.
When you look at the overall cost per square foot for maintenance, it'll go down, but you're increasing the size, and I asked a question of, what was the RSU going to do to make sure that our taxes don't go up, or that maintenance costs don't go up because of this increase? When you do the math, it's clear it's going to cost you more.
For what? I'm sorry.
For maintenance, because the, the, the cost per square foot of maintaining the building today, I'm just, I'm throwing out numbers, we'll say it's a dollar, okay? It's way off, but, so.
That's fine, that's fine.
With the new building, with the new changes, it's going to be 75 cents, all right? So some, you sit back and say, oh, wow, it's going to be cheaper. And when you do the math, because you're increasing the square footage, it's actually going to cost more on, on your total budget. Now, the RSU knows that, and they're going to have to go and figure out a way to not increase, but that means they're going to have to cut somewhere else, or, who knows? But their assumption by everybody, even the RSU, that there's going to be an increase in maintenance costs. How much that is, nobody knows at this point, but there has to be an increase in maintenance costs, you, you know, like the high school, you had so much, so much.
I was admitted, but, Jack, if, if, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
To that point, Dan, that information got dollarized and misstated, you recall in the Kenny Bumpford town mailing, they said it was 100,000, 400,000 dollars increase. That was a misstatement, and it was subsequently corrected by the selectmen with another mailing. The number that the RSU has come up with is about $100,000 annually, because of that increased square footage.
That's an increase, Jack, of 100,000?
District wide, yes.
What, what?
Jordan.
I'm not saying, I'm sorry, because it sounds like I'm beating on the clock.
That's okay.
And I'm not beating on anything, for God's sakes. Just simple, you know, you read it, the first paragraph, it's for a total of 25 years, and repeated again on the, for down below, and, you know, to me, I just, it was, why is it being repeated? I mean, I don't know, it's.
It's a fact.
It is, but then, then, then we should have had that 7.5, or, you know, I just don't know. When you repeat something, it seems like you're trying to buy something off. One paper is.
Personally, I don't get that. I think this is strictly sticking to facts, and I'm not, you know, one way or another here, okay? But I'm just looking at the two pieces, and this has got some good information on it, don't get me wrong, but this is to persuade the voters to say yes, and that's your goal. This is to persuade, to tell the voters, this is what's in front of us. We don't want to tell the voters yes or no, that's not the position of us on this, it's just, here are the facts, and the facts is what's been presented to us, and the facts is on what's at the RSU 21 website.
Our, excuse me, our only point, I think, is that the facts, we'll agree, those are the facts. They seem to be placed in a juxtaposition which is confusing. You're talking capital cost on the top paragraph, bonded cost on the second paragraph, and people frankly, except for you, who are into this, it goes right over their head, what you're talking about.
Well, I think, my suggestion would be. What's it going to cost me for, what is, what's going to cost me for my taxes? How much are my taxes going to go up? I think that's the majority of the people are going to sit back and say, how much are my taxes going to go up? I don't care if it's, if it's, you know, capital and interest or what have you.
And, and that's simply what, without the, I think you ought to be putting out there. I, I think, I, I gave you that sheet, one, not, not to suggest that's what you go with, but there's factual information that is not advocating one way or the other, that I think would be very useful to answer that very question of, how much is it going to cost me?
I, I went to the website, Jack, it takes two seconds, and it gives you a nice printout of what it was going to cost me over 25 years, it takes no time at all.
And, and how many people are going to do that?
You know, I'm the most computer illiterate guy in the world. I'm pretty sure a lot of people can get to that site easier than I did.
Well, I, I understand, and we expressed our concerns, and, and, which I think is a very.
Frankly, if I was a non-initiated and read this, did all these numbers, I would think we're getting a deal. It's costing us five, almost $600,000 less than it would if we took the same number, the same renovation project with these numbers that we did ourselves.
But it would actually cost you more.
It might, we don't know whether we would do the same, I'm just saying, the same project, same numbers, and we're not sharing that cost, we're only paying 10 against the left. It's a good deal.
You're comparing opposites.
I don't, I don't think I am.
Capital cost versus bonded cost, and that difference happens to be less. If rates go up, there'll be more.
But even, I'm saying, it's, that's right, it's even better if you look at.
I just have one comment. I had someone ask me why we were paying almost 22 million, end up paying 22 billion or two million all day, because they had taken the 11.32 and the 10.792 together.
What can do about people, perhaps, don't take the time to read carefully.
So I told them differently. There's not a bunch of numbers completed, that's what I want.
It says a run those portion of the total.
Right.
It says it right there, would be the cross.
That's what I told them.
Anyway, um, does the board want to instruct our town manager to do anything with respect to another mailing of any sort, or clarification?
My only fear with another mailing would be, it would confuse them even more. That would be my only fear. That's what I'm most afraid of. I think there's good facts on both sheets, if you could put them together, it would be great, and I think it.
The RSU also did a mailing, I didn't get it, but I did see it. Did they do a mailing? I don't know.
I got, oh, Ken.
I almost forgot yours. I, I didn't get it either.
If you have a post office box, you won't get.
I don't, I don't have a post office box.
It's fine, how do you?
Yeah, and, and from a board's perspective, I certainly don't want to, want to be in a position where we say, you know, put stuff off to try to sway one way or the other. This issue for me is whether I'm for or against it, the town really needs to decide.
Let me offer one final thing, okay?
Okay.
This flyer, can I get it up there? Will be in your mailbox tomorrow. Every mailbox in Arundel. That's what I hope, our, certainly an advocacy position. I mean, there are a lot of yeses printed on there, and, but I think you'll find the facts entirely correct.
If that's coming out already, Jack, why do we?
It's gone.
You get it in advance, coffee.
We're all getting your mailbox. So we're not inclined to do anything more, is that what I'm sensing from the board from that hearing? Leave it alone?
Motion for that?
No, please. Thanks for the input. Anything else, anybody else have? Going in to approve the minutes out of December 9.
A motion to approve the December 9 minutes.
All in favor? Okay, and we have motion, a minutes from our meeting on December 23 as well.
Who put that? Has read it?
Shut a second now. All in favor? Two extension?
Okay, committee of board reports. The Economic Development Committee will meet tomorrow night, 6 p.m. I believe that that meeting will have to be held in the conference room, I think there's a conflict with the recreation department in the library, I'll verify that in the morning, update the website as necessary. Town hall will be closed next Monday in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. RSU 21 referendum election will be held on the 21st, which is next Tuesday, from 8 a.m. until 8 p.m. at the fire station. Planning board meets the 23rd at 7 p.m. in the library, select your boys, every time I ask, and the comprehensive planning committee will meet on the 28th at 7 p.m. near the library.
On a new business day, selecting to consider the, the mid-application to operate and maintain an automobile graveyard, automobile recycling.
automobile recycling business and/or junkyard. Marcel DuBois, property located at Two Irving Road. We tabled this, passed over it because they were working that conditional use permit until back in October. But received the conditional use approval, that was the...
Is that the one that, didn't we approve that pending?
That was the... No, that was one steel.
Oh, okay.
This rule is taken. I make the motion we approve.
One second.
All in favor?
I do have one, one comment. When the mining board signs them...
Yes.
Could they print their names? I recognize Roger Moran, but that's about it.
That's Martin Kane, the second one?
Well, if they could just...
Sure.
Print their names would be nice.
I can make that a change. Did you change the date on your, this is twenty-eighth October.
The public hearing is having fifteen. Okay, yes, I'll need to change that, but do you want to just initial it?
Yeah, just doing pen and pencil.
I'll type the dates underneath it.
We all have to initial our pageant, right?
Um, D.
No.
No.
Next item is discussion on holding a multi-board workshop, hoping to go to up against a plan and potential updates.
Similar to the one we've held in the past. This time, John Webb has volunteered his services to mediate such meeting.
Why don't we need a mediator?
Things tend to regress. But it's not a necessity. That's just a conversation I had with John, that he was willing to do. I think we're all grown up. We should all be able to get along, but was that the last one?
We're not necessarily at a stage yet, as far as I can see.
I don't believe we are. But it was recommended by members of the Economic Development Committee that process is moving along faster than some people are aware of. All meetings are open to the public. All meetings are, most meetings are recorded and placed on the website. This is a discussion that the board of selectmen, I guess, should have.
Two of us are there.
Right, exactly.
Sam was there, and Ira was there, and Don was there from EDC last meeting. And some suggested that there was gonna be some additional contact with you folks. Do you get a sense that we're moving forward too quickly with this? Is that, is that what we're hearing? The complaint?
I don't want to speak for anyone that's been in my office, but yes, some people do think that the public outreach has been lacking. There will be, obviously, like you said, we all know, every meeting's open to the public. As the process moves forward, there will be public meetings in regards to this. This is a subject of conversation that has come up on a few different occasions, where the requests have more effort be placed upon getting boards together to get the input of all of the boards before anything is completed. The planning board met with the complaint committee directly. The EDC has not had a face-to-face meeting solely with the complaint committee. So the concern is that all boards get together to weigh in on the process so that it'll be possible to have a unified front to get this to town meeting, to get this passed.
I don't think we've kind of jumped and done here. We don't even have a product yet.
I actually think we're moving too slow.
That's why.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're there.
I mean, we had a decent debate, I thought, last meeting. Expect to one eleven consume the whole.
I'm new to the EDC part of it. I've just, I've only been to one meeting. But I know the last meeting, we were afraid that the comp plan would be created in a way so that if the EDC wanted to make some adjustments per the, the...
Consultant.
Consultant.
That's stupid.
And the comp plan was already created, that we'd have to go back and reconstruct. I mean, we did, we wanted to make sure all our eggs were in one basket before...
Once we get the plan together, we've got to hold public hearings, with respect to, we want to hold public hearings. We do want to make sure those people who are impacted know that Tad's been trying to keep posting the loop here. And then just gotta go to town and vote, so it's not like the complaint committee can eat at anything. It's gotta put the plan out there, and then hopefully, we want to get everybody on board, get a consensus, so we can. I guess, I guess that's what we spent last meeting doing. I think we've kind of looked through what we get, what the EDC wanted to be, and we have several other members of the complaint committee who are, have a different point of view, and that's fine. But we have got to a point where...
I mean, we've been talking about one eleven for the last three meetings.
I know.
You know, it's like...
With respect, when I speak for myself, not for the EDC, okay? But as a member of the EDC. The, the EDC is not yet finished. It's digesting the Chesapeake report and coming up with our strategies that we are gonna present to, obviously, you and the town at some point. That has been done. As far as I know, the complaint committee has no idea what that's gonna look like. Certainly, the mining board doesn't. And it just occurred to us, that rather than everybody going down separate roads with good intention and good speed, at some point, early in the process, before things starting, start getting formed in either of the groups, it would be good to have an open conversation amongst the groups about what a shared common vision is, what the ground rules are, and to have, just see people be able to talk to each other in a forum that might take an hour or two, but certainly lay the groundwork for a common basis for all three committees, four committees. Yours and the three committees.
Good idea, but I don't think we're ready for that. And plus, you guys haven't even, you know, I would say, understand what that report is for us.
Well, we have a very good understanding, with respect, Dan. We have a very good understanding.
I know, but you just said you haven't finished going through it, right?
No, no, we have, yeah, I can't speak for the committee, but I think we, we certainly have an understanding of what the recommendations of the Chesapeake group were and how we are trying to propose to implement in a very broad way, in terms of the sectors of the economy that look to be attractive for a runway to try to attract new business in. We certainly aren't trying to go where, or what to, where to put, or anything like that. But as the conversations go on in each of these groups about what to do about land use and mining, is that intuitive, what the EDC is gonna be saying? I don't know. I really don't know. I, I don't go to all meetings. It just seems to be a less conversation to be within early on. And nobody can say, gee, I didn't know that. Nobody told me that. That was the idea.
I, I just think it would be better if you had a product, and the complaint committee had a product, that at least there was some consensus on the two respective boards as to, we're thinking we're going, and then we could exchange those, and then maybe have, I'll sit down to see where we conflict, or we, if we do conflict at all. But I mean, just a free-willing, I've been to a lot of those kinds of meetings in New York. I guess I don't go anywhere. There's a lot of people talking, and it's...
Whatever's by the outside moderator, maybe, somebody with a bullwhip.
Even with that.
That doesn't have an agenda or any group.
Even with that, as I said, I mean, it's, it's just too many people. Without, without something to concrete to talk about. I've read this, whether I like it or I don't, and I don't understand this, I do. We read your plan. I mean, I haven't seen the Chesapeake document yet either. So I, I would like to have all that information before I sit down and start talking to, you know. I just, that's just me, but I mean, you guys may have other, other thoughts.
I personally am just a I daughter and a T crosser. I, I can't stand going to the meetings where, you know, for instance, comp committee's come up with a plan, EDC's come up with a plan, and now we have to go back to the table and start over because our plans are totally separate, when if we had gotten on the same path from the beginning, it would have made the end result a lot easier to get through. You know, that's, me personally, I can't stand going to meetings and going back to meetings and then going back to another meeting to discuss the same stuff that could have been dealt with in two meetings versus three meetings.
Yeah, you would still have to discuss it in the first two meetings.
And then, before you know it, a year's gone by and nothing's happened, you know what I mean? That, that would stink.
How far down the road do you think we should, we should be having meetings, joint meetings? Because if this is going to the voters in, what, June?
We, that was the goal, but the way things have been going lately, I mean, I don't know that it's gonna get there. Last meeting, we got, got literally nowhere, I think. We got a perspective from the EDC, which some of the boards accepted too, and some was not. But we never got to the end, so we're, I don't, you weren't there, it's no problem. But we never got to a point where everyone said, well, I, I agree, or I don't agree, and we just haven't got there yet. So Donna wasn't ready to, didn't think we were ready, I guess, to...
Yeah, we're still trying to figure out, you know, what, what's your role and try to define that.
Yeah, Don.
I, for one, think it would be helpful. I got my hands on that report, kind of on some of it, but I don't think anyone on the comp plan really has, right?
I don't either.
I think it's important facts to have, if we're really all coming to the same product. We don't all have the same, same information. I would hate to see us going two different ways, because that's a waste of time. And really, I thought it was helpful having a couple numbers, three, kind of, um... But I, I think it should be all of them, because Sam doesn't represent the EDC. I don't think it can hurt, especially with a moderator, like, no time is the essence and people get carried away. I think early on, at least we know this document, and we can all have that document, and know when that would be released to all of us, and make sure that we are kind of the majority going the right way.
But isn't that why we have a representative from the EDC on the comp plan? Like, John's a representative from the EDC, right?
That's right.
Isn't that why we, you know, I mean, I thought that was the reason for that, for that, to make sure that we're, you know, kind of going down the same path?
You guys haven't seen the report yet?
But it's not the final, right? Is that the problem at this point?
EDC is, is going to consider accepting it tomorrow evening. What is it that, to bring it forward to the board of selectmen and the rest of the community? I mean, we, not, not a hundred percent of the, we don't agree with a hundred percent of the document. The group doesn't agree with a hundred percent of the document, but the facts are there, and there's something to work with for the town, for sure.
I mean, we're very aware of the, of the time urgency here, but we want to get this thing out, out there, moving and doing planning, development planning, rather than just talking, you know, Chesapeake about the plan.
So once you have that finalized, then that report can go up to everyone?
Everyone. Yes, we have.
I think once we've all seen the report, perhaps, then it might be time to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably the time, when we've all had a time to look at that report, digest it. You know, maybe then, you know, maybe that's a reality check for the comprehensive planning committee at that point.
You know, I think, you have to see that, you know, that the report suggests it may not be, well, be different from where we're headed. So I just, I'm a jockey, so I don't want to have more meetings than I need to. Get bogged down.
I would love if you'd set a deadline when you want that report.
You want to set a deadline?
Yes.
We can do that? Want an outside consultant?
No, he's done his work.
Oh, he's done?
He's done.
Okay, so it's just the EDC needs to do something with it?
Tomorrow night, the EDC will make a decision as to whether or not we've recommended changes. The changes have not been forthcoming, so I think the document we have...
What's you recommend the changes?
Uh, there were just a lot, it was heavy on agriculture, to be honest with you. And the, the data didn't necessarily support that transition from all of the stuff that we don't have and we need to the heavy-handed agriculture portion of the report.
Could we get from the EDC something in writing as to where your disagreements are with the report?
Yes, you could do that, or we could give you what...
Give the report and where you found...
That's right. I was just gonna suggest that.
I mean, just that.
A finished copy with no redlining.
Right.
And then, hey, this is where we disagree.
Right. That would be really helpful.
Now, you want that to be presented to the board or to the comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan, this board, planning board.
Well, the, I'm sorry, the comprehensive planning committee will present to you. Is, is that, is that what you're looking for?
No, the EDC will present...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, not one hundred, yeah, he had it right, wrong group, alphabet's group. The EDC, the EDC will present to this board.
And then we're gonna share with everybody?
Yes, sorry, I had to...
Right.
Lost the courage.
You even confused me, Sam.
So who decides on those changes? I mean, if you're recommending them?
That is, that is, here's the report. EDC recommends these changes. The EDC's recommended changes will influence the economic development plan that's developed after this plan comes out. And if the board of selectmen agree with the points of contention, let's say. The document is what the document is. I don't think it's fair for us to alter it extremely in any manner. We paid him in to do, to do the consultation for the town, and this is what he's come up with. We may not agree. I've asked him on several occasions to bridge that gap between the opportunities and strengths, and then the implementation. That's where I'm having the biggest issue with the, the report, the two phases of the report that we're dealing with right now, is it is, to me, in my opinion, it's very heavily geared towards agricultural development in the town of Runaway. Just the other day, agriculture is growing in the state of Maine. It's not growing by leaps and bounds. My question was, how do you support your conclusions for that heavy agriculture? And that has yet to be provided to. So that's the only, there is a definite disconnect, in my opinion, between the data that was collected and the recommendations I've made.
He's not due to come back to discuss this with us?
Not anytime soon.
No? Sometimes I've got a sense from the last thing he was here, we're gonna see him again, but maybe, maybe just, he was just going to the EDC again. All right, so I guess we're expecting some action from EDC on the plan, your criticisms of it, and then once we have it, we'll share it with everybody. I'll let everybody digest it, and then maybe after that, if everybody's going off in every direction there is, then maybe we'll, that's the time to sit down and say, okay, let's have a meeting with everybody and see where we can head out. Does that work?
Okay.
Individually, sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay, moving on then. From the selectmen and everyone here, the results of the townwide survey relative to the town hall.
They are still filtering in, but the results are in front of the selectmen. I don't know if there's copies. I can make copies if the group would like, or I can, I can just read them one by one. New town hall, seventy-five, seventy-five respondents say yes, thirty-three respondents say no, and one is unsure. I'm sorry, I had to laugh at that. Location choice, forty-eight in favor of the Limerick Road, ten in favor of Bergeron Drive, seven in favor of Route One Eleven, and seventeen in favor of Route One. For the next meeting, Will Conway and Ryan Sartor will have the preliminary layout of those sites. Bergeron Drive is turning into be logistically difficult, but I ask will provide that information to the board so that we can make addition. Decision from there, and on construction costs, I'll be very honest with you, I'm surprised. Less than a million, there were three respondents. A million to a million and a half, there were thirty respondents. One and a half to two million, as of today, was thirty-three respondents. And two to two and a half million were seven respondents. So this is a very, very small sampling of the community at large, but it is hopeful. It gives me a little hope that you may actually have a chance of getting a town hall here in the town of Runaway. So this has all been given to Will and Ryan. Every time it's, every time we receive new surveys, we log them in, and it seems to be that the majority of the community are in favor. When it comes, it comes to time to put the dollars where the miles are and actually vote on it. We can't guarantee anything, but it gives us a little hope. we can't guarantee anything, but it gives us a little hope.
If we've got any questions or comments to make about it, any information?
Have there been comments at all that were...
Yes, we haven't generated all the comments yet, so we'll have those. We'll compile the comments and hand them up to the board as well.
So I spoke some numbers.
Do we own property on Limerick?
We do not own property on Limerick. There had been a piece of property that was put up for consideration, but the site is...it would be difficult at best to locate down.
Anything else on that page? Okay, the next item is to form the selection of denial of the appeal of the United States Postal Service for a zip code change in the town of Aurora.
That is correct. I think...I believe you may or may not have read the letter. Once again, it's money, 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 databases, manpower, realignments, mileage, equipment. The majority of the people over the six or eight months that we've been appealing and reappealing to the postal service, businesses are in favor of a zip code change. Majority of residents in town who I've spoken to since this started were not in favor of a new zip code. They cited everything from the lack of ability to use smart posts with two separate addresses. There are a whole host of reasons. The board of selectmen doesn't agree with this appeal. We can go to Senator King, Senator Collins, we can get congregation involved. congregation. Representative congregation vote involved. I think at this point, we accept this as the will of the USPS and take it back again at some point in time when we may have a little more information to be able to back up what we're claiming. Ironically, a good friend of mine, Bob Devlin, is the county manager in Kedvack County. I had dinner with him a couple of months ago, and he actually laughed because he said that this is something that they were dealing with when he was having manager here, that he may have said in '75, or it was a long time ago. And he nailed the exact...a single resident who has come into my office on several occasions against this, he remembered that same resident. So I think possibly what we do is, as we move forward and begin doing economic development here, at that point in time, we attempt to get the postal service to hear our wishes one more time, but at this point, I think we hold what they said and take it as gospel, I guess.
Costs. So about costs. Has EDC seen that? They have not?
No, they have not seen this one as yet.
They've not seen this as yet.
So they'll get it tomorrow?
Tomorrow night, right?
They will.
Be interested in what your reaction is and whether you want to continue to pursue this or not. I don't know how I'm looking at Senator's work with this.
Yeah. Okay, update on the winter maintenance budgets.
Anybody notice it's been snowy this winter and icy and...
I know, I always see the trucks on weekends.
Yes, exactly. We're after hours. The overtime budget is shot. I think we had $85 left in the winter...in the public works overtime budget. Roger and I have had this conversation. It's not going to happen again after hours, Jack, I swear. Roger and I are...Roger's very aware of what's going on. This isn't the first time he deals with this. You know, year-to-date, 272 tons this year, and 214 tons of salt last year, 180 gallons of liquid calcium chloride last year, 530 gallons of liquid calcium chloride this year. Salt doesn't work below 28, 15, 27 below, salt doesn't work. So they've been going through a lot of liquid. There have been stretches of 30-plus hours where these guys have just been at it, and we've gotten a little bit of a refreeze here. We're hoping for a good stretch of fairly mild weather, but it is what it is. It's winter in Maine, budget shot, but every other town's dealing with it, and we will do everything we can to keep these costs in order as we move forward to the spring and the summer season, or the spring season mostly. But Roger's very aware of it. We meet quite regularly. I can't tell the guys to go home, I can't tell them not to treat the roads. They don't waste...they don't waste a lot of time. They're trying to get in, get out, and get rid of the... The accumulations on the road as quickly as possible, and they have just been really long, drawn-out storms and really cold, rainy, frozen events. That's what we're dealing with, you know. All that told us this year was going to be the year, and, well, they were right. Is there any thought process from Roger's end? I hear this every year, that, yeah, we live in Maine, yeah, it's another winter. Is he sending his guys home, like, on a Thursday if there's going to be a Saturday storm, so they're not getting 40 hours during the week and then 12 on the weekend? They have been doing that. We can't...we haven't forced them to do that yet because a lot of times, what will happen there, I've seen it happen where they send them home at noon on Thursday, and 3:00 in the afternoon, we get some accumulation, we get calls that this road's iced up, this that road's iced up. So that's a callback, which turns into automatic overtime. So sometimes, the majority of the time, it's worth it to keep them into that extra 3 hours, because once they get called back to work after they've been sent home for the day, there's automatic overtime time to run. So... If you're sending them home at noon, regardless if they're there until 3:00, they put their 40 hours in, no matter what. If it snows at 3:00, it's a callback anyway. Right. So you could at least save 3 times 10 men, 30 hours in an afternoon. Union contract used to prohibit that. If we start doing that as regular practice again, I would assume that that...I've been told that that union contract will come back into effect. That's not a threat from me, if you don't consider it as a threat from them. They have the option to do that, but that's where we're at right now. These have been long, drawn-out storms. We can...I can talk to Roger about it again and see what we can do about doing that, but that has a tendency to upset the masses around there.
And they don't answer the phone when they call.
Right, exactly.
Didn't they have done that? I've tried that many times.
How can they not answer the phone on a municipal...now it becomes a liability on municipality. If they call 911, we don't answer the phone, well, guess who hangs?
What would be an answer to the phone?
You send your employees home on a regular basis, on their regular pay, and start calling them in after hours?
They don't come back.
Because some of them are not going to answer the phone, or all of a sudden, they're going to be sick. I've tried that year after year, it doesn't work.
Do you have one to talk about that dead news?
I think they're doing a good job of keeping the equipment in good working order, and unfortunately, the irregular work that they get done during the week gets done, and then you wake up Saturday morning and there's three inches of snow up there. And the first thing I hear when I wake up is the snowplow going by, and I go, oh, must be Saturday, there goes the snowplow.
And the last, you know, the last three seasons, they haven't been this tough. We have had some fairly considerable winters, but we've yet to have to overexpend the public works budget due to our hard winters. So we're going to do everything in our power to take care of that.
Okay, what's done is treasurer's report.
As stated, the biggest...the biggest overage here will be public works overtime expense account. As you'll see, if you go to page four of your expense summary, overtime has, yep, $84.72 left in it. There is overtime...I mean, there is part-time funding available there, and as Roger said, in winters past where this has happened, tools and equipment don't necessarily get purchased, outside contracting doesn't necessarily get done, and unfortunately, it turns into a spring or a lot of maintenance and a lot of upkeep get done because there's just not a lot of room for any additional expenditures. And that's how he's used to doing it, that's how I'm used to doing it, and hopefully, that's how this board is used to doing it. I...you know, last resort is, state statute does allow us to overexpend public works winter maintenance, we can take that straight out of the general fund. We're going to do everything that we're going to have to do.
We don't have a lot of insurance.
Every one of those is a little bit lucky.
They...there was an increase that we weren't...it wasn't very forthcoming to us. It was a greater percentage than we thought, than we were indicating.
But there isn't overtime in general assistance?
Yes, there is. She does the...she does secret scanner, which causes her to have overtime, and she also does board of appeal meetings. She's staffed to board of appeals, and so that's why we've got you there.
When was the last time the board of appeals...
July or August.
For the DuBois thing, right?
Yes, it was.
Any questions on the treasurer's report?
We have municipal park reserve?
Yes.
Oh, that's Dan expended balance, sorry.
Yes.
I just reminded us, I'm going, huh?
Okay, I mean, I want you to approve the pay was born.
No move.
All in favor? Let's get done all the business and take care of those two items first.
Yes.
You've already told us that Will and Ryan will be here in the next regular meeting.
Yep.
And we have credit and debit acceptance at the town hall?
We will in about 30 days, at the most. There was a delay in Anders Skoggin Bank setting up the accounts with Mastercard Visa, so those have been set up. They've sent test files, they're closing on the goal and what it's meant to do, and in the next 30 days, they will set their credit at the town hall, at no charge to the town. The user will pay the fee.
Okay, we have the business number? Question? On the motion to executive session, one MRSA, question four or five, six days for poverty payment requests.
So...
Second?
At 8:02 or 8:01?
8:01. It's fast.
Yes.
That's slow.
It is 8:02.
All in favor?
If you would please, Simone, I'll come...